The Monday, August 23rd, regular school board meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody who has taken the time to come be with us tonight. We're going to do a quick roll call of directors. Jeremy is present.
Cindy Cassidy, present.
Sarah Hughes, present.
Eddie Benami, present.
William Borsette, present.
And I believe we have one absent, Roger Canoy. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the government for which we stand, one nation, a fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, all the board members should have received the agenda. Now's the time where we will discuss and or take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll review the I-35 mission statement, district priorities. The mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society." Our district priorities? A, articulate and support a cohesive, student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement; B, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century; and C, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness." The education spotlight, I-35 Prairie and Garden.
Mrs. Makers is here to give us an update on the I-35 Prairie and the Gardens from this summer.
Thank you for taking time to come with, be with us tonight after the long day of teaching.
It's shortly, it's all good. So, in 2010, I got some grants, actually students helped me write this, for some grants from the VNR, Pezzet's Forever, the I-35 FFA, and some other entities, to start about three acre prairie. And we're trying to restart the prairie that would have originally been here in times gone by with the idea of having an outdoor classroom space that students could study and explore the interactions, organisms, and that ecosystem. And since then, we have added other things like the garden. And our garden has had many faces and has changed locations a few times. But the idea of that is again, to give students access to real food that we grow, so we know where our food comes from. And then also to offer things to the community members, maybe they get to have a garden, maybe they own gardeners, but things to help them understand how they can have healthy food here local without going beyond. And I want to thank the board and administration for being supportive of those efforts, and both just by approving them as well as some financial supports along the way. So, thank you. Anything else you want to know?
How long did it take to establish the prairie and get it up and ready?
It, to get a prairie to full maturity is often even as much as five to 10 years.
Right.
And we're, we're good. Travis Strabel with Wildlife Data Solutions comes and burns it for me for free. That's one of our maintenance protocols is to burn it. And periodically, we get seed. I wrote another grant this last year and I got seeds to reseed. And the kids had a ball. We made seed bombs. And then they had a trebuchet and we shot them into the prairie with trebuchet. We had a little, yes, yeah, a little science, a little physics thrown in there, it's all good. And then the garden this summer, it's been maintained by myself and Katie Klingensmith and Zane Smakers. And then the community have been harvesting it and using it. I've sent emails, people enjoyed the green beans, did can some. And the lady made some salsa recently, and so it's good. And then during my jumpstart class, the students went out and picked, and they all got to take home a zucchini. You know how that is?
Yeah.
And some green beans. So, it's been good. Hopefully, they're going to get to taste some watermelon out of the garden. Just another way for kids to see that they can have those options for real local food and produce. So, maybe start gardening themselves, so.
Does Ms. Boyd ever can anything or use anything out of the garden?
She will probably, it depends on how the tomatoes come on. We've had some folks picking tomatoes for their own use. So, if there's tomatoes available, she plans on using those in her classrooms. Or maybe use some salsa, something like that.
It's, yeah, I was just going to say, it's been wonderful to see throughout the summer, you know, the notifications on social media about what's going on and everything. So, I appreciated that, so.
Sure. Well, and you guys aren't going away empty-handed. So, my garden is prolific too. So, y'all get yourselves jar of salsa, there was a candy action at the house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tessa, there's one for you too.
Thank you. Your mic is off, by the way.
Oh.
She's an experienced teacher, she didn't need it.
I can't hear my voice. Okay. Good?
Thank you. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers, speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance.
I did not receive any.
Okay.
Did anyone sign up and do you get this one?
Will, you ready?
I guess so.
Student representative report.
Uh, not much to report. It was an average first day. We didn't have the learning curve of getting to know Schoology, so it went a lot smoother than last year, plus less issues. Students still utilizing their freedom to wear a mask or not wear one. So, all in all, I think it's going smoothly. And I think we see a smooth go into the school year.
You think you're going to get up, I mean, can we ask him questions about his experience?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, go right ahead. So, so fill everybody in so everybody knows what you've been doing.
For, for those who don't know, I went to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri for basic combat training. Red phase, basically, you know, it's the whole get up, wake up at four o'clock in the morning. So, you know, after a while of that, I was like, man, I can understand why my mom's always angry in the morning. So, you get that. Which, it was actually a lot of fun. Like, after a while, like, sure, the screaming gets annoying, but eventually, you take everything with a grain of salt. So, you get used to that. White phase, the kind of middle section, that was a lot of fun because that's when we got more use out of our weapons. We had to shoot M4s and, uh, no, that wasn't until, because, uh, yeah, it was a lot of waiting though. So, white phase tended to drag on, which is actually when, during white phase was when the worst day of basic training happened. I can fill you guys in on that later if you want to hear that story. And then blue phase was when we got to deploy two hand grenades. So, that was a lot of fun. Very stressful that, but it was a lot of fun. And then after that, it was basically just practicing graduation over and over and over because we just couldn't get some of the things right. Apparently, raising your right hand is a concept hard to grasp. But, uh, all in all, uh, you know, it was basic. It breaks you down mentally, but then afterwards, it builds you back up. And I gained a lot out of this, so. Yeah. A lot of people say they regret, you know, their time in the military. I'm not to that point yet. I think if, if I could, I would do it again, honestly. And I didn't think I would think that while going through it, but once you're done with it, you're like, yeah, I, I would do that again, so.
Yeah. Best experience or takeaway?
Um, best experience would probably be, or takeaway, one of the two, would be like, the actual like, discipline and stuff like that. Like, you learn, I mean, obviously, teenagers, they're not the cleanest. One thing you learn is to keep your stuff clean, keep everything organized. And that was something, like, as soon as I got back, I wasn't ha, like, I walked into my room, I was not happy with the way anything was organized. I had to move everything around, so. And then, uh, the worst one was July 27th. That's how you know it's the worst, because I know the exact day. And, uh, it was actually a bad experience for the company because it could have been a very tragic accident. Somebody hid a live round amongst blanks. Yeah, that's, it wasn't good at all. But, uh, we had to go through like, five hours of being searched. And the whole battalion's cadre worth was at our company. You know, there was like, 30-plus drill sergeants, 20-plus officers. You know, the sergeant major was there just looking disappointed at us. And we were just like, we felt, we felt like crap. Like, it is, it's not good when your boss's boss's boss is telling you that you messed up. So, after that day though, we actually like, our drill sergeants understood, it wasn't actually my platoon that hid the live round, and our drill sergeants understood that. And so, they, even they didn't like punishing us for something that we didn't know, we know we didn't do, they know we didn't do it. So, that's where you kind of learn the humanity, that the drill sergeants are human, even when they're all, so. It's a learning experience, the whole thing. My honor to serve.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Will? Alright, thank you, Will. Principal reports.
So, just a few things that I want to kind of run down through here. I saw some of which is going to be on Sharon's report as well. But, um, you know, new teacher and veteran staff days, when we returned to school, was, was two weeks ago now. It seems like, seems like a long time ago, but that time went by so fast. And I think it was great to obviously get to know the new teachers or new staff to the building at a greater level. And then as well, immerse them with the veteran staff that come back. So, I would say overall, we had a, we had a wonderful start to the school year. It was a great structure. We've got a few things that I think we'd like to adjust. I don't want to speak for the whole admin team. But, uh, overall, I like the, the layout of the full week of being here with the veteran staff, as well as a nice three days for those new staff to come in to the building. So, that, that really helped them get acclimated, as well as, uh, we covered a lot more than what we had in years past with both of those groups. So, uh, hopefully, I, I would, I would slightly disagree with Will. I think it was an above-average day today, not just an average start to the day. But, we had, we had a really good first day. But, we, uh, we're off to a good start here. So, uh, the back-to-school bash that took place last Wednesday was, was kind of spearheaded by Rose Dickinson. And she had, she had help along the way with that as well. And, and she's thanked all of those individuals, but I, I greatly appreciate her efforts in that. I think it was a wonderful time to, uh, great opportunity to bring community back together, wonderful opportunity to get kids in the building. Uh, and it gave a, a fresh spin to open house, if you will. So, I appreciate her efforts in coordinating that. Upcoming things for the secondary, we've got, we've got PD and collaboration times that start next Monday. Uh, that's, that is where the professional development teams meet two days a week in the morning before school. Uh, they'll have an admin and a coach assigned to support them for that meeting. And so, the, it's going to be, it's going to be a fun journey for them. That's, that's where we'll provide that support for our standards, basic grading implementation, as well as, uh, the UBD process or Understand by Design process, which is that unit planning that we've talked about before. We've got monthly staff meetings scheduled for the secondary folks. One of the feedback things that they've provided us, uh, the last year or so, is that they'd like to meet on a little more regular basis. So, we have those scheduled to meet. Uh, there'll be after-school meetings for us in the, in, in the library. I wouldn't say those will be lengthy meetings, but certainly take care of any housekeeping ideas or thoughts that, that need to be covered. Uh, maybe it's initiative things that we need to follow up on. But, just a, just a scheduled time for staff to be able to come together and, and provide them what they need based on, based on their feedback. We've got a guest speaker lined up to come in and speak for us. He's coming two days in the fall, one day in the winter, one day in the spring. His name's Joe Beckman, uh, wrote a book called Just Look Up. And, and Joe, I've heard him speak a couple different times. He's just got, he's got a great message. He connects well with kids. Uh, we're also going to figure out in his agenda on that day, how he can have time with staff, as well as open it up to parents in the evening, hopefully to, uh, to kind of hear what his message is and how it can be supported at home. So, try and catch all three of those areas, staff, students, and parents, so that, so that that consistent message is coming to them, uh, from Joe. And again, that's part of the reason he's coming in the, in the winter and then again in the spring, is so we can hear that, that multiple times. So, uh, he'll, in the spring one, he'll talk specifically to, excuse me, to our seniors who are going to, going to graduate this year, but as well as all of the other students. But he's got a, he's got a nice, nice takeaway message for them as well. So, we're excited to host Joe. Um, I don't know the dates off the top of my head. September, late September, I think is that, those two days. And it's a back-to-back event for him to come in, uh, on that day. Uh, I've given you two handouts at your, at your table. The first is the, the shout. You'll see it, it looks like this sheet right here. This is our staff and student shout-out, um, form that we hang up in the, in the auditorium, I'm sorry, just outside the superintendent's office. Uh, so the purpose of this, which it describes on the board, is just to recognize any staff or students that have, have done something that goes above and beyond. Uh, we, we hung this up last year, and we're going to, we're going to really push to promote this, this year with our students because we have so many students and staff within our building that are doing cool things that may go a little beyond the classroom even. So, I think of Mrs. Makers and her outdoor garden. That's, that is a really cool thing that she does, that takes time out of her day, that goes beyond just what she does in a classroom. Uh, she deserves a shout for that. Um, on the board right now, I put up a shout for the custodians that spent time working in our building this summer. Yes, they got paid, but I, I'm, I've been around, this is my ninth year here in the school district. Uh, our building looked great this summer. And, and I think we had a wonderful custodian crew that took pride in what they did this summer. And so, and it was ready to go. I wouldn't say student walk-in, ready to go early, but, um, you could walk in the building and, and hallways were clear mid-July. That's not, that's not always been the case. So, uh, each of them deserved a shout as well. So, I, I gave you guys a copy also. Uh, there's more of these on my desk. If you're ever in the building and you see somebody that deserves one of these, but fill it out and set it on my desk. I'll gladly put it up, uh, because I want to, I, I can't be everywhere. I want our staff to fill these out. I want our students to fill these out because our people deserve to be recognized. So, uh, that's the purpose of the, the shout-out board. The second piece is our code of conduct. Uh, we talked about that a little bit today within our back-to-school assembly. So, I just gave you a copy of what is going to be posted in the classrooms. It'll also be hung up in our, uh, in our hallways at times. But this, you know, Mike Stewart brought this to us last spring, brought it to Sharon and just talked about, uh, some of the things that we would consider basic, or some of us may consider basic, that we're just, we're just not seeing in our kids as frequent as we would like, or as often as we would like. So, um, it just states, you know, Roadrunners say, it's split up in Roadrunners say and Roadrunners are. Because I think sometimes we take for granted that, that our actions always come with words, and that's not the case. So, uh, it is split up in two sections. But simplest, please and thank you, excuse me, good morning, have a great day. Uh, simple welcomes when you're, when you're talking to somebody. And then the Roadrunners are, they are on time or early to class practice or scheduled meetings, respectful, respectful towards the school facilities and common areas, and giving the best effort every day. So, uh, this, this will be something that you hear a lot from the secondary this year. Uh, we've had, we've had examples shared out already where we, we've got students that are modeling this in day one, which I thought was a, a quick receive. But I know, I know those, those kiddos that are out for activities right now are hearing this a lot, uh, from their coaches as well. So, uh, we'll continue to support this and promote this as the school year unfolds as well. So, so Mike Stewart brought this. He shared with the staff at, at one of our back-to-school meetings. Um, he got this from Dowling Catholic at a football clinic somewhere that they were talking about expectations for their kids that they have within their program. So, uh, I believe when he brought it and talked with Ms. Dentlinger about it, it was more about how can we, how can we take this and build on it a little bit to, um, get it more than just our participants for football. And so, uh, we had, we had Brayton Weber, Brayton Weber's wife Teresa came up with a, with a layout and a design that, that really kind of captures, because within the original document, it, it stated out almost, as a Roadrunner, I say, and there was, you know, simple statements for each of those. So, we wanted to capture something that, that is just one, one quick snapshot of what do they say, what do they are, and covers all of those. So, uh, we've, we've adjusted just a little bit. But again, applicable to whatever, you know, if, if you're a student within our building that doesn't participate, you can still model and represent what each of these are.
Definitely. I think this is great, so thank you.
Yeah.
I could, I could use this at the postgraduate level.
You know, I, I, I kid with people. Our, and this isn't, this isn't something that we put in place because our kids are, are bad or poor kids. Um, I think, I think we see some inconsistency, inconsistencies amongst our kids. And so, if we can talk some common language with them, uh, we'll, we'll clean that up in a very, very quick time. But, uh, all in all, I, I greatly, greatly appreciate and acknowledge how, how kind and thoughtful our kids are already. I think that speaks to volumes at home as well and how our kids are raised in our community. But, um, that, that doesn't mean that that's 100% of our households that, but we can support that here as well. And this is, this is another way.
It's a good reinforcement. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, last thing, day one for us, uh, we had an assembly this morning, a separate assembly for middle school and high school. We then, we then reviewed, during that assembly, we, we reviewed daily and weekly schedules, expectations, and that code of conduct. Students were checked out, laptops and back in their advisory, as well as their ID tags that they'll, they'll use throughout the year. Uh, they then had the opportunity to meet with, with each of their teachers today in their schedule. So, uh, again, very successful day one for us and looking forward to many more. Last thing, and I, I know I'm probably on the clock here getting timed for how long I'm taking. But I want to thank Heather Duttry for the work that she's done to help support me in getting this school year started. She's taken the lead on our middle school stuff. She, she just has, has done a lot of things this summer, that, late in the summer especially, leading up to, uh, the start of the school year that, that sometimes get missed by me as we are getting into the, you know, the, the thick of things. It's just those fine details. So, I, I want to, I want to appreciate her for all of the things that she's done to make the year a start. So, thank you to Heather. That's it for the secondary.
I, I just wanted to make a quick comment too on the back-to-school bash. It was amazing. I thought it was wonderful. So, thank you for supporting Rose, and with that, I'll make sure to get.
Yeah, maybe two ice cream trucks next time. That line was really long for a long, for, for quite, all night long, actually. So, but yes, I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Castor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, a lot of the stuff, I'll have to say, kind of echo some of what Steve covered. But, um, just going back in time a little bit, we had registration a few weeks ago. A few hiccups with the new system, but overall, it went pretty well. The fact that parents can add new kids to the district on their own, um, definitely made it easier for us. After registration, we realized that we had numbers that would justify four sections of preschool and four sections of kindergarten. Um, so more on, on that in a little bit. The pre-service, um, days, we had eight days of in-service with new teachers and returning teachers. Um, eight-packed days of, of learning and time for them to work in their rooms and to get ready for open house. So, I, I think that week went really well, or better part of two weeks. Back-to-school bash, I've heard it a few times already, but it was, I've heard a lot of good comments from it. Um, I know from my standpoint, it definitely looked different with the passports. Um, it allowed me to interact with a lot more kids because they had to come up and get my signature. Uh, so that was, that was very interesting. And, uh, I think it was, it was a very busy night. But teachers appreciated it because it allowed a staggered arrival to their rooms, where normally, everyone would show up in the first 10 minutes. They'd drop off all their stuff, they'd fill out their paperwork, and they'd be gone. And then teachers were kind of standing there for the next hour with no visitors. Um, this caused a, a staggered approach to that. Um, so they said they were able to have more time with the, with the parents and the students and be able to talk to them a little bit more. Food truck and everything else going on, it was, was just an added bonus with, with everything else that was going on. So, um, again, thanks to everyone, especially Rose, who helped put that together. Today, we had our kids back, obviously, um, all the teachers out front to greet the students. It was, I think it's kind of a neat way for, um, parents to get some pictures in. And, and, uh, we had a lot of people in front of the building, if you drove by this morning. Um, I want to thank Coach Stewart and having the football team out there to greet students as they came in. I think that was kind of a neat little tunnel that they did, uh, for the kids. Um, we got our day started. We had an assembly in here this morning, um, a good chance to introduce the new staff, um, to the, to the kids, um, to, to see everyone in here again. We didn't get to have that last year, so that was appreciated to be able to have that. Um, and I also had the opportunity to introduce our 42 new and returning students in, this is the K4. So, just in the K4, we have 42 new and returning students. Um, part of the reason why we had to add that, um, late section. Um, so that was amazing to have those numbers. I read all the kids' names off. Um, and that's not even counting, obviously, the new preschoolers because they're new to the system, um, as well. But, uh, um, back to the new teacher part, we had, after registration, we realized that we had a position to fill. Um, in case you're wondering why there's a late hire on there, um, we, we had to add a preschool section. Um, we posted a preschool opening at the same time we opened, posted a K6 opening because I wasn't very optimistic on a PK applicant, um, which was, which was well done because after the weekend, we'd had no PK applicants, but we had one qualified, um, K6 applicant that was not a, under contract. Um, so we made an internal shift and, and, uh, thanks again to Samantha Ritchie for being willing to move to preschool for the year. We filled a kindergarten position. So, from registration on Thursday, posted it on Friday, hired the teacher the following Wednesday, and she started on Thursday. So, she even was able to catch some of that new teacher orientation. Um, and within, from that Thursday to the next week, which was open house, um, she was able to get, we had a teacher moved, got her moved in. Uh, thanks to Becky Bertrand for helping her get set up and getting everything that she needed for curriculum. Um, within a couple days, she had a room looking like a classroom. And everything worked really well for, that was my first time being in a position where I had a hire less than 10 days before school started. Um, it couldn't have gone on better. Um, our new teacher, Allison Rich Hart, um, is, um, I think it'll be a very good addition to our staff. So, I'm glad and proud to have her on board. And then, we did a PBIS review with our students during the assembly, just kind of again, going over our four expectations of be safe, responsible, respectful, and be your best. Um, kind of introduced that to obviously our new students. Um, we had a PBIS meeting this afternoon to kind of look at what it's going to look like for the year. You know, we have our PBIS store, we made some changes to that last year. What does it look like this year? And I think our committee had some good ideas. Um, and we'll have something ready to roll out here in a couple weeks for that. Um, and then finally, just I want to thank Heather as well, but Heather Wells, uh, for the help that she did this summer to make sure that we were ready for that one-to-one rollout today. Um, I know with all of our new, our increased numbers that we weren't really expecting, we definitely put a crimp and a twist on that process. But for the most part, we're able to get that taken care of, so. Any questions?
Not hearing any, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Yes, so you've heard a lot about what we've been doing the last two weeks. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. I will say, the focus is, um, around kind of a, a comprehensive professional development plan to look at why and how we're teaching. Um, and I think most people know what to do. We have really good teachers with lots of strategies. We just want to tunnel down a little bit to get to some of those hows and whys. And so, that's what our focus has been on. Um, we are, as you've heard, back-to-school bash was one of hopefully nine events that we'll have this summer to bring community in, families in. Um, we're planning, I think, to do something around homecoming, which for those of you who like to plan before the calendar changes, um, the Homecoming game is September 17th, which means Homecoming Week kicks off September 12th, which when you turn the calendar and get past Labor Day, comes pretty quick. Um, and I know that is, I'm asking Mr. Castor, but Mr. Weber is planning on doing the Roadrunners Have Talent?
Well, that's heard of.
Um, you know, we, we did that the first year when we had the auditorium and had some, some fun with that, um, had some alumni back and had some of our students performing. some fun with that, um, had some alumni back and had some of our students performing. And I think we're going to do that again this year. We were going to do it annually, but obviously last year that got, um, got nixed, um, for, for obvious reasons. Um, we did also talk about communication and being, um, out in the public. And so what we, what we did is I talked with Jen Baughman who, um, organizes or, or is on the board for the Tri-Corner. And so, um, I know Jeff won't be able to see this, but we're going to do two pages each month except for July because we do the Road Runner Report in July. So we'll do two pages each month, um, with events and topics that are in, going on in the school or things that we're seeing, um, questions that people have sent in. We'll answer those. So this is available to any household in our district. And if you are outside of our district but would like a copy, or if you're in our district and you don't get a copy, please contact Jen Baughman. She actually has a school website or email address as well. But, um, this will be one of those things that we put out there that hopefully it's, it comes out, I think, on around the 17th of the month. So hopefully it'll be a nice balance with board meetings when people can have questions. So that's, um, the Tri-Corner Express. Excuse me. I have a summer cold. I feel really good. I just sound like, um, on the last leg, as Ted tells me. Uh, COVID protocols, we sent this out to families, um, last week on Friday, and I, um, wanted to just touch on a few things. We do encourage students to wear masks if they are not able to socially distance. Um, our teachers, we talked on Friday, or on third, Friday, that just a reminder, um, obviously we're not enforcing, we're not, um, mandating, but we do encourage. So, um, I, I'm lucky enough to teach a college comp class. I'm going to conference with kids right next to me, so I'll wear my mask when I'm conferencing with them because we're obviously not socially distant. So we're just asking teachers to work through when socially distancing is not, you know, allowed in a school and encouraging kids to wear masks then if they have them. Um, we will notify parents if their student has been in close contact with someone, um, who tests positive. With that, we have a few things around lunch that we still have to work out. Um, as I'm sure you, you've all been paying attention, our lunch program is federally mandated and the mask requirement is a state law. And so we have a lot of conflicting guidance. So we're trying to work through what that looks like for our federal lunch program, um, and what that, what that means. So we're talking about the social distancing in lunch, which is hard to do anyway. So there might be some changes to our lunch structure over the course of the next week or so, once we get kids in, in their normal schedule to see if we can, um, spread them out a little bit. The idea is, is that they'll eat lunch with the same group of kids, which is pretty typical, so that if we do have to do a, a close, or a contact tracing, we can just say that your kid might have been, um, in contact. So just pay attention if you notice any signs of COVID. Um, if your student is quarantined, um, or tests positive, 5th through 12th grade will still be able to do, um, learning through the Schoology. Um, 5th through 12th grade teachers are expected to have that continue to be updated, which this year is a, a whole lot easier because it's, we could, we could roll over. So for my comp class, I roll over that class and then I just update everything in it. So instead of putting everything in it and redoing it, I'm able to just edit what's already there. So that's, that's very handy. Um, K through four, pre-K through four, parents are, um, and teachers, we're asking them to work together on what works best for that family. If it's electronic, then that's an option, or if it's just paper pen, or in some cases, the teacher catches them up when they come back. So that's, it's a little different because they're, um, not as independent learners. So that's the COVID protocols that we've shared. The other thing I, I left for you is our strategic planning. Um, I'll give you more on this, excuse me, next month at the board meeting, but I wanted you to see what our action item focuses were, and these are in gray. So this is more just a preview. I will also have this online. We shared this with teachers last week. Um, if you remember last year in our strategic plan, we, we scaled back because we focused so much on giving teachers time. Um, and so this is, again, a modified version because we still have considerations around cleaning and safety protocols, but, um, we're, we're looking at a few more items on our strategic plan. So I'll share more with that, um, next month at the board meeting. Oh, the last note I have was, um, the culture of learning. Um, one of the things that we try and do is team building. Team building activities, and typically we assign those to principals or to our coaches, and they are sometimes hard to come up with something that's engaging. So, we put the, the ball in the court with the teachers this year. So we have our, and it's based on our Olympics, you know, that was the motivation. We have our Olympic, not so Olympic activities that we're going to participate in throughout the, throughout the school year to have teachers work on communication, um, just get to know staff that they don't normally work with. Maybe an elementary teacher is paired up with a high school teacher. So, um, I would expect to see some of those things, um, on, on Facebook or on Twitter. So. And then finally, I had a question today and I thought I would just address it quickly. Um, air conditioning, uh, we did have a lot of success with getting 10 rooms added to our air conditioning. So now we have 20 rooms added. Um, we added the air conditioning and air filtration system to our ESER funds. Uh, because that is, again, federal money, we have to go through a process to allocate those funds. So I posted in July that that was one of the considerations is to finish the air conditioning and air filtration for our middle school and our high school. So we're getting bids on what that looks like. The challenge we have is that we're very short supply of materials. So we were, we were lucky to get our 10 rooms done, um, but we're working with, um, and talking to the people who are putting the bids in to see if they can, you know, come in and, and work anything out. Um, the challenge is, is obviously air conditioning is right now needed. Um, and in October, when they might be able to get here, it's not a huge high priority. But that should help us in the spring. So the idea is to, to finish the, the main parts of the building. So the middle school wing and the high school wing, um, but not the high school gym. That'll be a, a pretty significant ticket item when we decide to do that. So this will help with air filtration and air conditioning, and it'll also help with the controls for the teachers in the classrooms for heating and ventilation in the winter. So we are in the process. I know it's, it seems like it should be faster, but unfortunately it's, it's just not. So.
So then by the end of that, will all the classrooms have it or without the gym?
Correct.
The gym is the only place?
Yes.
Oh, good. And that's hopefully next, by this next spring?
Hopefully by, by the end of summer, I'm going to say, next summer. Because I'm not sure availability. We, we have to, I mean, we're asking the contractors to give us their best guess and when they can get it all done, knowing that we have school in session.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sharon, for those that aren't reading the material, can you just reiterate what happens when, uh, a student is, um, designated as being close to someone that has-
Sure. Yeah. So if your student is, is identified as close contact, which means I'm at a lunch table with three other kiddos and I maybe test positive, as a school, we're just going to contact the three other kids' parents and say, your student may have come into close contact. Um, parents get to decide what they do with that information, whether they want to quarantine. And typically, I think it comes down to what, is your student showing any symptoms? Um, so we just want parents to have that knowledge so they can maybe pay attention to it. But, um, the idea is just to give them as much information so they can make a choice for their student, um, as they navigate.
So it's, I mean, it's different from last year where-
It is different.
Last year would be required quarantine, but this year the option is there.
Correct. Yep.
All right. Ms. Dohlinger, was there anything else? All right. Not hearing any. We'll move on to our consent agenda items. These do require a motion and a second, uh, before we can vote to approve them. Um, everybody should have gotten a copy of the past meeting minutes. The monthly bills and the financial statements were distributed. And then we had a number of hires and resignations, and I will go through those. Allison Rich Heart hired as kindergarten teacher. Betsy Shoal Lane, Shoal Lane hired as an associate. Stephanie Raminga hired as head middle school volleyball coach. Jordan Fitch hired as middle school assistant football coach. Tim McKinney hired as high school assistant volleyball coach. Uh, William Swim changed from middle school assistant football coach to middle school head football coach. Margot Bops hired as associate mentor. Stacy Schultz hired as associate mentor. Daria Collier hired as an evening custodian. Nicole Kinley hired as an associate in the daycare. Nicole Faith hired as an associate in the daycare. Cole Daniels hired as assistant football ninth grade coach, and Nathan McKinney hired as a full-time bus driver. We also had some open enrollment and the building and ground transportation secretary job description was included in the packet.
So can I talk a little bit about that position?
Absolutely.
So, um, currently, we don't have a secretary in our building and grounds nor in our transportation. So we have a bus driver that helps quite a bit, um, in that department. But we've realized with summer activities, with ordering supplies all summer long, that really we need to have somebody in there consistently to support those roles. We also know, excuse me, um, Rick Gray has started his 43rd year in the district. As he'll tell you, he came to preschool or kindergarten and never left. He started the year after he graduated. But, um, we were looking for a way to help him transition and make sure somebody has some continuity with, with what he does. So, um, that position will be, uh, an exempt position. It will be a 260 contract, similar to the, um, business office and, um, my secretary. And they will probably take on a few responsibilities that aren't included in building and grounds and, and transportation as, as need arises. So we want somebody to be trained in both those areas that can support those departments because we get a lot of communication through them and just to kind of keep things consistent.
Any questions or discussion on the consent items? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
I'd second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Items for discussion, student data, this is informational.
So I've included, we did get our, um, 2021 ISAS data back. Um, we also have our 2019 data on this sheet. This 2019 was the first year for this assessment. So we do not have years prior to that, before that. It was Iowa test. Um, when, when I was young, it was ITBS. Um, but, so it's, it's kind of evolved over time. Uh, so this is what our data showed, and I highlighted colors. So in 2019, our third graders were at 59% proficient. Um, the unique thing or the, the thing that's a little different about this assessment is it actually is a, is a benchmark assessment more so than it has been in the past, which means that it measures third graders for third grade material according to the standards. And so, um, we had our baseline the first year in 2019, and you can kind of see where we are. We did not take it last year. Um, the, the year was called off before we had our tests. We usually take it in the spring. So you can see the difference there. Um, that's based on the cohort. So in, in third grade, 59% proficient, and in fifth grade, 70% proficient. Um, and so you can kind of see how the numbers correspond in reading and in math. Uh, I will add, we just got notification that our, um, our state data is available, so we will look at that and put it in here comparatively. Um, the first year we took it, we were around state average. Um, I, I'm not sure where schools are going to be this next year, uh, or last year because of so many changes to how schools came back, whether they came back right away, whether they were virtual, whether they had an alternate schedule. So there might be some discrepancies with that data, but at least it gives us a point to see how, um, students did. This is what drives our conversations around learning, um, what our professional development is. Our target is for these to be at 80%, um, which is core instruction, meaning what teachers do every day in class. And so when we look at how and why, that becomes really an important part of, you know, you know what to do. Now let's figure out how to do it most effectively, use our resources. And so, um, we've added interventionists at the middle school and high school to help support some of this work. Um, so when we look at how are we allocating money and what are we doing, this is data that we'll use to help determine that. I think it's, it's tough because the first year was a baseline year. Nobody knew what to expect on the test. Um, and this last year obviously was a, kind of a crazy year with COVID. Every student, whether they were in person or online, took the assessment. And so it's all of our kids. So some of these students, we hadn't seen all year unless maybe we saw them on the computer screen. So this is, um, one of those data points that we look at. And once I get the information, um, for the state comparison, I will add that as well, and we'll talk through that. Um, the other piece of data that we use, um, quite frequently are our FAST results. And this gets to be a little tricky because our FAST results are based on a screener. And screeners by design typically flag more kids than not, because they'd rather flag them and have people have a conversation than they, than not. So it doesn't necessarily line up with benchmark. It just says typically a third grade student should have, I'm not sure why it's not loading. I'll check here in a minute, should have these skills. And so if you're close, they're going to flag so that now the third grade team has a conversation about Sharon, who maybe needs to just have a, a, an intervention on one skill quick and then she's solid. So the idea of a screener is it always screens more students typically than we see on the ISAS test because that's what it's designed to do. And we'll load these on the website as well. I'm not sure why it's not loading.
And Sharon, while it's loading, just so I understand the, the colors. So in 2019, a fourth grader would have been pink or, you know, he, if that person was in fourth grade, but then the pink moves to sixth grade because those are, that's the same cohort.
That's the same group of kids.
Same group of kids.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, could you remind me, some of these tests don't always align with, I guess, how we teach it, or there was disconnects in the past?
Right.
And I think that one of the reasons why we upgraded our math system was to get it more in line with this.
Correct.
Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Correct. Yeah. So, um, math, when I was even higher, that was a conversation that we had. And the question was, how do we, how do we solidify that instruction and still have it be targeted towards the benchmarks? Everyone, not everyone, a lot of schools taught math differently. There are some schools that have algebra in eighth grade. There are some schools that allow algebra in eighth grade. There are some schools that you can't take any algebra until ninth grade. Most of our math, most of our math instruction is algebraic, algebraic based. So you, that's where we want kids to be. So when you get out of high school, we want you to successfully completed solid algebra coursing. Um, that's what I think most colleges are expecting. We also offer, obviously, trigonometry and, um, geometry and some of those other things, but algebra is, is kind of the core. Um, and so, oh, in 2019, we started using, um, a math curriculum in, um, the middle school in seventh and, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. and sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And it was, it's, it's a different curriculum. It takes kids from where they are and it makes it very applicable, meaning real world problem type things. It's not just rote memory.
Exceptional.
Right. It's, so it's, it's, you understand why the question or what, what the question is asking so that you can go about answering it however works best for you. It's, it's the highest research-based curriculum that's out there at the current time. It's just, it's a learning curve. So when you look at a new curriculum, typically it's three to five years with solid implementation and training for teachers. So our teachers this summer spent, was it a week, Mr. Castor?
Yeah, six days.
Six days of day-long training on the curriculum. And our high school teachers are just getting, implementing it this year. There are student supports, it's web-based. So there are lots of resources for students to have support beyond just a textbook. But those are things that we are very diligently targeting over the course of the next two or three years and being targeted in the professional development for those teachers because that's, that's how it's going to be most successful. I think there's, it's, it's gone by the wayside where we give you a textbook and say, okay, here's what you teach and then leave it up to the teacher to kind of figure out what's best out of this 280-page textbook, when you know you're not going to be able to teach it all to mastery to a group of, of 25 kids. You might get half of that taught. So instead of having that, it's, it's about collaborating and creating those conversations and making it real world for students. So when they go beyond school, it's applicable and not just 20 even problems or 20 odd problems, which is what it was like when I was a kid. So it is a shift. We anticipate that this is, this is one of our intervention hires. We see that there is still a need and we're gonna, we're going to continue to address that. But shifting that curriculum should align us more to that assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
So with 2019 being the baseline and then you're saying that 2021, I mean, from what the other graph you were just showing? It seems like, like say the light blue in 19, it goes from 72 to 57 and then?
Right.
The pink going further down on each, with each grade level. Are you taking this as an anomaly or, or how do you?
No. One of the challenges is, is it's really hard to say, 2019 is a, is a base year. It was the first time we took the test. So kids had never been tested like this. So on the screen, it might pop up, whereas when you used to do Iowa test of basic skills, it would give you an equation and you would have to put in the answer. Now there might be two people swimming and if, you know, it's a 50-yard pool, it's an animation, you have to figure out how many laps they're going to swim. So it's not just an equation, it's an application of the equation on the test. So it's a, it's almost a different way of testing some of their skills to they really understand what the applications are. So when I look at that 2019, it, it's a baseline and we take it for that. The challenge with 2021 is we had learning loss from COVID. We knew that was going to happen. And we also had a shift in curriculum. So we knew that we expected some of that because you usually see a dip. I mean, it, there's research that'll show you there's a dip before you see that rise. So when we talk about targeting that, am I concerned? Well, yeah, because we're not at 80%. But am I, am I surprised? Not really. And that's why I want to look at the state averages as well, because I think this will be representative of a lot of schools across the country because of the disruption to learning for that seven months, including summer. But I mean, it's not an excuse. I just think we need to be aware that there's probably an asterisk on 2021 as well. So when we look at the data this summer or this next school year, we take the test in, I believe, April typically. I think that'll be a better comparison to our baseline than what this last year was, just because there's not that inconsistency. So the FAST, I did pull that up. Let me see if I can make that a little bigger. And again, you can look at these. We have several years down at the bottom that gives us data points. So we, we, what we do is we look at, if you look at early math here for kindergarten, they were at 65% and then they were at 72% by the spring. First grade is at 60%, got up to 83%. So we're looking for that growth upwards. And so there's lots of reasons for that, but this is what teachers are using that collaborative time to have conversations around, because this is data we get, they'll take the assessment in the next week or two. And then the teachers will get that feedback the next day. And so when we talk about interventions for kids, we have the discussion. And this is where I think we sometimes don't think of it kind of holistically. What we've typically done throughout education is Sharon and Ted don't score well on this test, we're going to put them in intervention, they're going to get a, a, an extra time, 20 minutes with our interventionist. The problem is, is that we've not really done a great job of diagnosing what the issue is. So we've gone to the doctor, Ted and I have both gone, we both have poor health, but I could have heart disease and he could have high blood pressure and they're treating us the same. And that's kind of how interventions have historically been. What we're saying is by having this conversation about my heart disease, well, it's hereditary and it can be managed by exercise, right? So I put on an exercise regimen, so I'm, I'm able to do that and my heart disease gets better. Whereas Ted has a different, a different issue. So he needs to go see a specialist for something different than I do. And so working with the interventionist to really target what that, what that need is, is really what the focus is. Because instead of just saying, you need an intervention, go over here to title reading, for example, what is it you need an intervention for? Do you need help decoding? Do you need help with comprehension? Do you need help with multi-syllabic words? What is it that you need support with? Because if I put you in a group for comprehension and you can't even break words apart, you're in the wrong group. And so our target is really looking at what do we need to do with kiddos based on this data to get them the intervention they need, instead of just maybe extra support. So that's, like I said, that's been the case, I think, in schools for a long time where we just say, okay, they'll, they'll go to a reading group. Well, you will put six people in a reading group, which does help, but it's not targeted. So we're not seeing the results. We want to be targeted with that so we can see the results. And so we see some of that. Our kindergarten and first grade really targeted that in math over the last two years. So you can see, you know, they've, they've had steady growth in those. They're still not where they want to be. If you ask them, they'll tell you, we're still not where we want to be. But you see some of that. The top numbers were our reading, the bottom numbers, numbers were our math. And all of these tests are just a little different. Early math is a foundational skills test. Do they know how to read an equation? Do they know you start with the left and move to the right? Do they know some of those basic foundational things? Math automaticity, how quickly can you do something? Is it automatic? So a lot of times you think of flashcards. AMATH is a little bit more comprehensive. So we see kind of a combination of things in that. And then we also have an I-ready. Oh, sorry. So I-ready. This is students at or above grade level. This is based on the math curriculum that we're now using for the second year. So we saw that huge dive in the fall, which we expected because of COVID. But then the gains we're seeing by the end of the year are significant. I, I anticipate that's going to be even more significant this year, which is always tough because nobody wants to see this and say, okay, that's where we are. But the, the intent of the PD is really focused on this data as it becomes available to the teacher so they can be more targeted in their instruction.
Is our target in this number 80% as well? Or is that?
Yeah. I, I mean loosely, because it does, it does identify more kids. It's typically not right at 80%. I would say if you're above 70 on a screener, that's pretty solid, but it's just, it's not the same kind of assessment.
Yeah. It's not as quantitative based as it, because the assessor is a person.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Has the targeted intervention in our state been practiced for a while or is this new?
In, in some places it has been, yes. MTSS, ESA rolled out four years ago. I want to say some schools have been doing it.
In that format?
Yes, in that format.
When you say some schools, do you mean it's more prevalent in say, a bigger school with, because of resources?
No.
Or is it, or is it random?
Um, you know, so I'll, I'll give you an example. When I was in Northwest Iowa, one of the school districts did this work because their population shifted. They went from a predominantly rural white community and became heavily Hispanic because they had meat packing facilities. So they had a huge shift in population over the course of a three or four-year period. So they had to really target students learning English. And so they were very targeted in what kids needed because you had kids who maybe didn't speak English, but then they also had skill deficit. So instead of saying, we need to put them all in the same place, they, they, they didn't do that. So they've been working through that, I would say for at least 15 years. But they had a very real need that was different than most schools in Iowa. So a lot of bigger districts, I don't, I would say they have, they have more resources. But again, it's, it's not typically how we have ever thought of interventions. And so that shift happened about five or six years ago. And now more schools are really kind of focused on that, what is targeted?
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to the preschool handbook. This does require a motion and a second for us to approve the preschool handbook.
Mr. Testa? Do you want to give us the overview of the highlights from the preschool handbook?
Um, yeah. So this is, in order to meet our new QPPS accreditation, they needed to have a handbook that was all encompassing with a specific list of things that they needed to have. I don't know if you've kind of scrolled through a little bit. Mrs. Dickinson put most of this together. Obviously you can see that there's, it's, it's quite long. I don't really have much of a synopsis of everything that it encovers, other than it, it has the table of contents, which addresses each of the issues or each of the, the sections that are spelled out within that QPPS. It just kind of spells out what the program looks like, what the classrooms look like, the numbers that we have, our ratios, has a kind of an introduction for parents. Goes a little bit into what the curriculum is that they use, how they do their assessments, which is through the GOLD Assessment Program. It's quite a document and we're going to roll that in with our elementary one so that we don't have to kind of have two different things that can just really be all, all encompassing within that. So I don't know if you have any specific questions you're looking for, but it's just, it's just really kind of gives a, a sky view overview of what our program entails from what its goals are to what the tuition is to a lot of, just a lot of information about preschool, so.
I will add that when you look at this, you'll see there's tabs or headings that have the standards. So QPPS is, is pretty rigorous, meaning you have to meet several criteria. And this is the connection with that criteria. So if you see QPPS 5.1, that'll tell you what section of the, of the QPPS document it's, it's meeting. So you'll see that throughout, which we've added. But there's, there's a significant amount that we've already done because NACY again was also very rigorous. But you'll see some of that overlap with the QPPS to meet those standards and there's, there's several of them. We do have a site visit, I think for November with the state. They'll come in and evaluate everything, give us feedback and make sure we're accredited. So.
All right. Are there any questions on the preschool handbook? That does require a motion and a second for us to move.
I'd move to approve the preschool handbook as presented.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the preschool handbook as presented. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Our next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 27th at 6:00 PM. And that should take care of it. I would need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we go into adjournment. All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.